Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for October 10th, 2018. First item is salute the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. On approval of the agenda, any objections to moving E up?
E.
E, 13th Street.
No.
For any reason you-
Tell us.
Is that okay with you?
Yes, that's okay.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, so someone want to make a motion for the approval of the agenda with the-
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the amendment to move E up to the first item under Old Business.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Okay, minutes of the last meeting we don't have, so we'll skip over that. Department heads and committee chair updates.
Let's start with this. Last week we talked about sand bids. I've got a written poll here.
Grant's statement, or is it? Can't remember last year's poll for this one. Everybody visit?
Now, half the town hall probably overheard our little discussion, or my discussion, I would say, and I want to bring to light what the issue is here. Starting three weeks ago, I was in Indiana, I got a phone call from the selectmen wanting to know when I was going to do a certain project, the flat ground road and the bit bridge project down on the hopper road. At that point in time, a little irritated with the idea that I was on vacation, I was told not to be called unless it was an emergency. I probably didn't answer it the way I should have, but answered it'll get done. On Thursday of that week, I get a phone call that I'm going to get an email with deadlines of when these projects have to be done, if not that you guys will take care of them for me, okay? At that point, I verbally resigned, told everybody where they could do whatever they want, and when I got back, I was talked to and convinced that that would be only screwing the Town of Acton. So I've continued on. I have started the flat ground road project. We've had two weeks down there, cotton brush, hauling off hundreds and yards of material, installed three culverts, worked in the rain, awful hard to grade roads when the puddles are full of water, so we haven't got to that point yet. But I also had Abbott Hill go down and cut the tree at the bridge and all the brush around it, the big stuff, a start. But I was given until October 5th, and I can't remember the other date, so I pulled off any other project I had, which was the New Bridge Road project, which was something I was trying to prepare for Hot Topic for this year. So we pulled off that project to go do the other, start the other two. So now, the New Bridge Road project is going to be a springtime pave. So now, I get a phone call tonight wanting to know the status on the bridge, because obviously I haven't done enough. And so, in this meeting, supposedly we just want to know when it's going to be done. I have given, as far as I know, Ed, you know, I told you that it was done, you know it was going to be done. I told you it was going to be done when everything else, we're hop, skipping, and jumping. But I guess I'm not doing it fast enough. So in the meanwhile, while I've jumped off New Bridge, gone to Flat Ground Road, taking care of the trees down there, I have Abbott Hill Tree Service taking care of, oh, probably 40 trees on the New Bridge Road, and I got four trees down on East Shore Drive going, okay? We've been doing numerous other projects, like we fixed the bridge down there on San Bon Road. But I want to know, am I not doing my job? I just need to know that. Because as far as I know, I thought I was elected to pick and choose the projects that I needed to do, okay? And I'm trying to do them in a timely fashion, okay? But we seem to have too many chiefs here. And when I get put in deadlines, I had to jump off other projects because you wanted them done, because you threatened me to have somebody else do them, okay? Now, I've got road grading to do, snow is coming. My priorities are getting Flat Ground Road done, getting my roads graded, getting those trees cut up there before winter, okay? I will get to that bridge when I get to that bridge. But do you feel that you want to hire somebody else to go do it?
The idea between, behind the deadline of October 5th to remove the sapling, shrubs, and grass around Row Bridge was because we knew that the water level would increase, and we thought it would be safer to have it done before that time, and that's why-
So you plan on having somebody go finish that project?
Perhaps, but my biggest concern right now is that we-
So when did we start hiring out my job?
You can't have an adult conversation without you telling us where to put stuff.
Yeah.
And I have a concern with that, because when budget season comes-
I have a concern being called, what do you call that? Anti-feminist, what'd you just call me in there?
I didn't call you anything.
Told me I have a problem with authority with females. That's what you just said.
That's because every time I ask you a question, you tell me that I should put something somewhere, and I don't believe that's the way-
Oh, I've only told you that once, okay? Until today, that was twice, okay?
Yeah. So what I'm saying is I'd like to be able during budget season to have an adult conversation with you without you telling, telling us that you're not, you know, without feeling like you're not doing your job.
I believe I was the only one that came up here during budget season and gave a list of the projects I was doing, and I'm doing those projects, okay? Now-
I'm not sure, I don't have the list in front of me, but New Bridge and Youngs Ridge is not on that list.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
New Bridge Road was on that list, okay? Youngs Ridge, I had to go do that because it was washed out. We're not paving Youngs Ridge. Now, I also came up here and explained to you three selectmen that I changed, we were planning on doing the hopper road first, but I have swapped to go over do the New Bridge Road, because you walk that road every day. We're dumping more coal patch on that road than it's worth, okay? So we figured we'd at least get a heavy shim on that road and take the rest of the money and go down there and do what we can do, okay? I did say that out of meeting. You guys obviously not following me here. So are we now, am I to expect, when you guys feel like having something done, you're just going to go and have my, do my job for me?
We have asked, and it's been asked more than once, or twice, or three times, or four times, about the bridge. I'm talking about, you know, the cleaning up. No, this is not something we want to have to do. But we have asked over the last several months, and we've been told, yeah, I'm getting to it, and so that's the reason why. That's the only reason why.
You guys gave me two deadlines.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I know that names were thrown around of people going down and do that project in one of your side meetings in there. I know that for a fact, okay? So have you already contacted somebody else to do my projects?
We have not.
No.
But is this something you've known since the spring bridge report came out, that things needed to be dealt with?
Yes, and I also-
I mean, it's not some-
Sat up here at this meeting and told you that I wasn't doing any work on the bridge, meaning on the concrete and all that, until the inspection was done.
Right, we understand that. I understand that. But the trees have been there for years that needed to be cut.
Yes, they have been there for years. Yes, I know that.
And so, it was brought up again this spring.
They're gone now? Are they gone now?
I'm just saying that if we don't put deadlines on them, they don't get done.
I'm not doing deadlines with you, okay? If you start hiring my job out, you can keep hiring it out.
These are, it was an overhanging dead tree.
It's gone.
Right.
Okay.
And so if something dangerous is happening to the roads in Acton, and we are now notified of it, I feel like it's my responsibility to make sure it gets done and taking care of it.
Problem is, it's not irresponsible, it's my responsibility.
No, it is.
Yeah, I know you-
Your selectmen are in charge of the safety of our roads as well as you. And if I find something that's dangerous on the road, I feel like it should be taken care of.
So am I now to expect deadlines for projects?
For things that have brought into our attention that could be a potential hazard to our residents.
Yep, and not as far as I'm concerned. I'm done with deadlines. I am.
I have no problem with authority from females, I'm just going to state that in public here. I believe throwing that around loosely is not, that's not cool. That's not cool at all, okay? When I tell someone where to stick it, I don't care if you're male or female, okay? You are overreaching your bounds.
It's disrespectful.
And it's disrespectful to tell me how to do my job.
I'm allowed to ask questions.
This is what I do for a living, I've done this for 10 years now. Unfortunately, I keep getting reelected.
But you do work for the taxpayers, right? And they're asking, and they're asking us these questions. So how do we answer them?
The only taxpayers that are doing it is your road committee. It's the same person over and over.
No, absolutely not. I was approached at Apple Fest.
Yeah, sure was.
No, it's not the road committee.
So the problem we have here is the same people keep doing the same complaining. I seem to be, there's four selectmen here now, okay? When I walk in the room in your little side meeting there, it seems to be every other time I'm in there, there's people, and they're the same people over and over and over, okay? And these people are the ones who want to go to a full-time road commissioner, they want to get rid of my position, they want to get rid of Scott's position, okay? You've said, you've told me that my job, you've told me right out that my job is a conflict of interest, that I should not be road commissioner because I own my own company.
It's what I heard through the DOT when their program, so that, yeah, I didn't make that up. It's what I read.
Can you explain to me how that's a conflict of interest?
I don't think I need to.
What?
I don't think I need to.
Okay, so you can throw that out there, accuse me of doing something unethical, okay? I put a lot of work in this town. I spent a lot of money.
I know you do.
I put a lot of money into my stuff to do this job. I got seven employees, five of them I have only hired just because I, for the town work. I put a lot into this, okay? But unfortunately, to keep those seven guys going, I also have to do other stuff. But I always get the stuff that needs to be done now, done, okay? Just like the snow plowing, just like the washouts and everything else, okay? I'm not doing deadlines with you.
We did call Scott, I called David earlier today, tonight. He did come up. Mainly, I wanted to know how he was making out on the bridge and the projects that we gave him. He gave us an update, he is bouncing back and forth between them. As far as I'm concerned, that's fine. As far as what he, how he does treat the other two selectmen, I'm not all that fine with that. But I'll talk to, I'll talk to Dave on my own on that, so, okay. Any other department heads or chairs? Nope, seeing none, we'll move on. Old Business. Okay, we're moving item, pardon?
I was going to say, we're going to E first.
13th Street.
We're moving, moving E up, the 13th Street. We had quite a discussion last week about 13th Street, and it was all, I think it was all great, brought a lot of things to light to us that I don't think we quite understood. So we're here to try to, try to help through this the best we can. I'm going to set some guidelines for tonight, if we will. We did invite our code enforcement officer, Ken Paul, to be here tonight. There is, I believe there's eight questions that were submitted that he was going to hopefully try to answer.
He's got all 11. I don't think he knows yet that he doesn't need to answer those couple.
Okay, okay. Okay, so the, and the other ones were the last three, correct?
Right.
Which, nine, 10, 11, okay. So we do have those questions that he's going to do his best to answer, and hopefully we'll have some, some direction in all this. I do want to set some guidelines. What it's going to be is Ken is going to, we're going to, we're going to read off the question, Ken's going to answer the question, we're going to move on to the next one. What I don't want to get into tonight is a lot of back and forth, you know, why is this this way, how come we can't do it that way, sort of thing. I have not had a conversation with Ken, I don't think the other two have, about this. So it's been all the emails, everything that's gone to Ken, I believe you folks have all seen, that's involved with the 13th Street. If you have any more questions after this, feel free to get ahold of us afterwards, feel free to get ahold of Ken. We also have a public comment section coming up that we'll try to take notes at too, if there's some more things that you want to have answered. But personally, I do think that there is a situation down there that needs to be corrected. I don't know the gentleman that owns the place, but I'd like to think that we can come up with something to cure this, so. Anything else you two want to add to that?
No, I think we were going to read the question first, so people at home can see it, and then we'll have Mr. Paul answer.
Yep, come on up, Ken. Okay, these are, it was actually 11 questions that were submitted, eight of which that we forwarded to Ken, or got forwarded to Ken, but I guess Ken has the other ones.
So we forwarded them all to Ken.
Okay.
And after, and the board. And I think that a couple of you got back to me saying that two of the three questions on the back page seemed to be directed to the Department of Agriculture, so we weren't expecting that he would really have an answer for them, but he may have something to say. I also haven't spoke to him since then, so I don't know what his opinion on those last couple of questions are.
Okay.
But they didn't seem to be directed towards him, I think was what you, a couple of the selectmen told me.
Okay. Okay, so what we have here is a list of questions. The questions, it's entitled Concerns of Citizens on 13th Street Regarding the Property on 773 13th Street, Acton, Maine 04001. Question number one. Is this going to work okay with you, Ken? We asked a question, you, okay? Question number one reads, who decided the activity on 773 13th Street was agricultural commercial? Was there a check into whether there was a state ID, tax ID number for activities on the property? Were sales records checked on the property? How does, how do you know the goats, chickens, eggs, et cetera, not being sold, still being, not still being sold at the property?
Technically, that's four questions, but you questioned one.
Exactly.
We went out to the site, the selectmen got a complaint, and it was put to us that it was a priority, so we dropped everything, went out there, went out to the site. We did see a few sheds, there were the goats were there, and the chickens were there, we did notice some stuff. I talked with the property owner's girlfriend at the time, I asked if they were selling the products. She had said no. I confirmed that I'm not going to find it on Facebook, Craigslist, Uncle Henry, she said no. So at that time, I reviewed it with the DEP, Shoreland Zoning Assistant Coordinator, and he told me you'll never be able to prosecute anything like that, that's an agricultural, that's not commercial. So at that time, I interpreted it as a personal use.
So, DEP, okay.
I didn't check to see if there was a state ID out there, tax ID, sales records and stuff like that, I didn't get into any of that. I went back out to the property tonight. To get to that property, I had to drive past at least a half a dozen violations. Some of them were pretty severe, that I just haven't had the opportunity to get to yet, but this was a priority, so again, I mean, there's, there's other things out there too. Not on this site, the other violations were, to get to there.
Okay. Okay, the next question.
Come on in, the next one?
Sure, go ahead.
We'll take turns. Why wasn't, why hasn't the unpermitted goat shed within 100 feet of the lake not been removed? Are there fines being levied for this situation?
So we sent the owner a letter at the direction of the selectmen to get a letter out the very next day. It's not the best letter our department has ever sent out. I wish we had more time to craft it a lot better. We gave him a timeframe, a short amount of timeframe. I met with the property owner tonight, he's got half of the stuff out, he's going to reorganize and get the rest of the stuff out. Levying fines, that's our last resort, that's if we have a property owner that's not working with us, is extremely uncooperative. If you guys remember the clear cut issue we had on West Shore Drive last year, he was as uncooperative as that you can get almost, and we didn't even find him. We just want compliance with it. We're not out to find people and stuff like that. If you're working with us, we'll work with you. The property owner was on site tonight with him, and he had stated, it looks like we'll be in total compliance by November 3rd. And that seemed reasonable to me.
Okay.
All right, so number three. Why is there still manure on the property within 250 feet of the lake? Are there fines being levied for this situation?
No on the fines, and there was a very small amount just from the animals out there today. I didn't see any piles or anything, just in one of the pens, and he plans on relocating that pen where the, it's more of a sloped land, and it's just up against the fence, it's more bedding and stuff like that. It seemed that most of the area, the only area is in the pens that it's packed down and stuff, and there's a good 75, 80-foot buffer between the pen and the water. And when we first went out there, we noticed that, that was the first thing we observed was the buffer. It was a really good buffer, vegetated down and through there, and we didn't notice any odor that day, and I really didn't notice any odor today.
Fourth question. Historically, this property has been used as a residence. Now agricultural use has been added to the property. Is this legal? Ordinance 1.4.11.5 discusses change in use.
Change in use would really be if you get into a commercial operation. This is, this is a minor use of the property, the property still is residential.
Okay. Regarding the permit request submitted for accessory structures at 773 13th Street, does ordinance provision 5.1.1 apply? This includes a statement that no structures shall be located closer to the shoreline than the principal structure, and only a structure of 80 square feet can be allowed for storage of yard tools and similar equipment. This provision in the ordinance mirrors item 8 on page 30 of the Maine Shoreland Zoning Handbook as an optional provision for the towns to strengthen their ordinances.
Doesn't apply. Do you want more in-depth, or is that good?
Could you in-depth a little bit?
I'd like to, yeah, please.
We have all we can do to enforce an ordinance that's legally put into our ordinance book, and it's black and white and you can read it. It gets very gray. Now if you start grabbing stuff from guidelines and stuff that aren't our ordinance, we can't enforce that at all. The guidelines are what we, we use to put into our ordinance. That shed provision is for somebody that has no room whatsoever on their property to have a shed. So if your lot, say, is 100 feet deep and you're supposed to be 100 feet away from the water, you would be able to have at least a shed and be within that 100-foot zone. And we put that in four, five years ago maybe, so people with these small lots could have a small shed to put their gasoline and stuff like that, so they're not storing it in their house and their garages and things. So if you have room that is compliance to put a shed, you can have three, four, or five, as long as it meets the setbacks.
Okay. Is it my turn?
Was there a survey completed when the permit to relocate the property at 773 13th Street was granted? That would help in deciding whether the current unpermitted structure is on an adjutant, adj, I can't say it.
Adjacent.
Adjacent, thank you very much, landowner's property.
It wasn't our policy to use the surveys back then if they were getting 100 feet away from the water. It is now, we're using the surveys much more. Apparently, there's a lot line dispute there. He thinks it's someplace, the neighbor thinks it's another. Talking with the property owner today, he's going to relocate it to the, what Butter thinks is his property line, so it's going to be in compliance with what they both think it is.
Okay, seven. Article 5.2.2 says that there should be no tilling or soil, no tilling of soil, and article 5.2.3, 5, excuse me, states that no grazing may happen within 100 feet of the lake has been broken. What actions are being taken by the town?
There's no tilling out there. There is a pen, which you trample down in there, and it's very limited. Again, when he relocates the sheds and the pen, they're all going to meet the 100-foot setback.
Okay.
Okay, my question eight's cut off. What has, what has been done, or will be done regarding the noise and odor from 773 13th Street property? Do ordinance numbers 5.11.2 and 5.11.3 and 5.11.21B2 apply?
Those are all good neighbor standards for proposed development. That would be any of the commercial uses we use when it goes through planning board, we would look at that for planning board uses, so that doesn't apply.
Okay. And the other two, the other three questions, I guess are more for Maine Agricultural? So did you have any answers to those questions, or did you just kind of, do you have anything pertinent on those?
No.
Okay. Okay, we'll leave those for the Maine Agricultural, Department of Agriculture.
Nine, 10, and 11 need to be directed there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so, okay. That answers the questions. So the property owner is attempting to comply?
Yep, so we deal with a lot of property owners. Some of them are difficult, very difficult. This property owner doesn't seem to be, he's willing to work with us, he needed a little bit more time. And if anybody's willing to work with us, we'll work with them as much as they can. I understand he's working 60 hours a week, it's apple season, he volunteers in some of the orchards in town, so I'm not seeing an erosion issue from the pens to the lake. Now, of course, there could be some invisible nitrates or phosphorus or something that I'm not seeing, but they have to go through 75 feet of vegetated buffer to get into the lake. So I don't see it as an imminent threat, it's not a public health issue. I know there were concerns about the dead fish and this and that. Those were all addressed early on by the Department of Agriculture and DEP. Both of them went out there and sent us a letter that they didn't have concerns with it. There was the oxygen level at the lake, that's a small cove, very small inlet, and it's stagnant water. At that time of year, they're expected to have depleted oxygen levels in an area like that.
Okay. Anything else you want to add?
I guess I'd just like to make a statement to address the taxpayers that have always supported our department for what we've been doing July, August, and September, the last three months, in addition to, I mean, this issue here. We've done 311 inspections, took 1,265 phone calls, 1,500 emails, that's not counting the walk-ins and the railatures that we're getting. We've got a dozen other complaints, most of them are related to the gravel pits. Some of them were out there at 5:00 in the morning trying to catch these trucks that are, that are, we're getting solid complaints on with those issues. Through the planning board, we've done a seven-lot subdivision, we've got a 25-lot subdivision coming through. We've done four conditional uses, property maintenance, wetting ponds, 56-lot campground, and a gravel pit as well, too. We had the level of service last year through our department, went through a special town meeting to get an extra person. We had a person for a month, didn't seem to work out. We got another person, and that person's on medical leave at this time. We really have never had that extra person at all. If we're going to continue to need this level of service, I think in my budget next year, I'll be looking for a full-time person down there to help us down there. The, the volume of work we're doing is, is pretty tremendous, and that was just for three months. That was June, July, and August. That's not bringing in July, August, and September. Revenue so far is a little over $46,000, and I mean, if I add October into that, it's going to be a tremendous lot more. If you talk to any contractor right now, they can't even tell you they'll even call you back this year. That's how busy they are, we're just as busy as them as well. And I understand that the taxpayers do pay their taxes and inspect the level of service. We have people paying $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 for a permit and expect they demand the level of service a lot higher too, as well. So I understand both sides of it, but there's only one and a half of us. And when we brought that new person on last year for 20 hours, we cut Brenda five hours, so we only added 15 hours. And if you're trying to train somebody for 15 hours, all you're doing is just catching the errors and stuff like that. So we've never got backup to staff.
Yeah, one question I did have is, do you feel as though you need more manpower and more help?
Yeah.
So, clearly-
To keep the level. And if you look at the amount of inspections we do, we do a lot more than a lot of other communities, because we are looking at the electrical, we are looking at gas and propane. A lot of towns don't look at that, but to me, that's fairly important. As, as being here for 20 years, I've seen when I've missed a, you know, $5 worth of flash, and it costs somebody $30,000 to fix the deck that leaked and stuff like that. So we're trying to be more proactive and catch things like that, because we don't know who's going to own that. We're not, we're not here for the person paying for the permit or the contractor, we're here for the house. The house is here for 100 years in town, and we don't know if it's one of your kids manned up with the house, or an elderly couple, we don't know, and we try to make sure safety We don't know, and we try to make sure safety is a priority. So we're in a position to chase junkie yards, or, or make sure the level of safety in these houses meet at least a bare minimum standard. So we're, we're trying to work both on that, and roughly in those three months, I worked seventy-nine hours beyond my salary base for, for free. And if I could work more or something, we could get more done, but that, that's, we're maxed out.
Yep. Okay.
I'm willing to stay if there's questions. If we don't answer them tonight, you guys are gonna get another wave of people next week or something like that. I'll stay and answer if you guys want, or if not.
One question I have, and I don't know whether it was answered down through here, is, you feel that, is it, is it a commercial, is it zoned commercially, and is that property being used commercially, I guess, is the two?
Yeah. The toughest thing to say, because everyone's gonna hear it. Our office is mostly smoke and mirrors. We're gonna try to get you into compliance with threats that we're going to court. I could never bring this case to court. There's no way we would ever win this case. We have a hundred percent batting average with the Tenth District Court now and Superior Court. We've never lost anything. We have a lot of respect with the courts up there, that we bring true cases through. We'd never, ever, ever. If he, if he hired an attorney, he'd eat us up.
I, I just have a question.
Yep.
When do, when does the amount of pets become agricultural animals?
That's funny, because I did some research, and New Hampshire DES has a prohibition on hoof and fowls within the shoreline zone. Maine DEP does not. One of the first inspections I did here was a shed that was gonna house thirty migrant workers. And I said, no way. You can't do that. Department of Agriculture straightened me out really quick on, yes, we can. That's how we do it in Maine. Agriculture is a huge business in Maine, and if you go after blueberries, apples, and potatoes, and now pot, maybe, because they're trying to be lumped in with everybody as well, too, you've got a big battle. They've got a lot of lobbyists. They've got so many exemptions in the building codes. They don't need to meet standards. They're really exempt. So goats, that'd be a battle with Department of Agricultural. Now, we could look at it and say, let's put an ordinance in that says no goats and fowls, no hoof and fowls within the shoreline zone. Currently, this situation would be legally existing non-conforming. It wouldn't count for him. Maybe the ordinance could be drafted retroactive, or if one dies, he can't replace it, or something like that. It's, it's a neighborhood, and when you're in a neighborhood, it's tough. It's shoreline zoning lots, they're fifty by a hundred, they're not very big. The campground we just did, a minimum standard, fifty by a hundred lots in a campground. So that's, that's when you're dealing with these small lots. The neighbors, it's tough. If you've got a good neighborhood, they all get together, but it doesn't take much, and then there's a riff and a wave. And I always joke that I've got over three thousand deputies in town. Our phone rings off the hook when anybody starts a chainsaw or anything. We get, and they've all been the people that was told, no, you can't have that, no, you can't do this, and why is he doing this? And, and we get emails and constantly, around the clock, of what's he doing, how's he doing it? So one of the things we're trying to do is more efficient downstairs. We've got all our permits on logged now, and it's a searchable database. All our phone records come in, they're all recorded also on the, so we can search those database. And we're finding a lot of people, when they're calling and leaving a complaint, will say, I searched the database on the website, and I see he doesn't have a permit. Well, we only go back to July, and the permits could be for a couple of years. So that's also helping us out a tremendous lot downstairs as well.
You have anything?
I don't. He's pretty much answered everything I...
Okay. Do we want to open this up to some questions? Ken's brought that up.
We're gonna wait, we're gonna wait till the end, or?
Well, I mean, we're in it now, but...
I need to have Ken weed to publicly comment if...
Right. Is there a spokesperson or someone from the thirteenth street that could come up and address? I mean, like I said, I don't want to get into a big argument back and forth, and I know you won't, you won't go.
Ken, I'm gonna have him take my chair. Why don't you sit here and answer questions, Ken, and I'll...
Oh, sure.
I, I don't, I don't think I have any...
Okay.
...need for answers. I just want to make some statements, if I could, and then from there, you can go on. I, on the, whether it's commercial agriculture, I mean, we know there were websites, we know things were sold. The reason we asked about tax ID was because my wife is a commercial artist, and she sells, and she has to have a tax ID, and that, that's how you know it's commercial. For example, I realize he pulled down all of his websites, and if Reds, Apple Farm Smiths, pull them down, would they still be a commercial agriculture? So that, that's a big, open wound that could end up with a lot of problems, as far as trying to legally enforce it. And then the second one is, on the eighth of August, I think, or thereabouts, Ken went out to the property, when there were complaints about water having high coliform counts, and the state came the next day. I think the forestry guy and the, um, DEP people came on the ninth. Now, at that time, all those, were, all those sheds were not permitted and weren't proper at that time, and nothing, they were clearly, one of them was clearly within a hundred feet, and nothing was done. And clearly, the manure was there, and our ordinance says very clearly, it has to be two hundred and fifty feet from the lake, very clearly. No questions, no ifs, no ands, no buts. And there's no way that that can be done on this property, because he doesn't have two hundred and fifty feet to do it. So that's kind of the way we view that as a group. So the hundred-feet thing is there. The two hundred and fifty thing is the big thing, though, the manure. Right now, the manure, I'm gonna try to find a picture for you of where the manure is being stacked, and, and it's put into a shed. I gotta find it, I got so much stuff here. Pardon my nervousness.
It's okay. Don't be nervous.
It's put into a trailer and left beside thirteenth street, and for the last two weeks, it was sitting in this trailer, and, and right next to the property owner's next door, and right next to our street, which is thirteenth street, and everybody can pass it around. That's a picture of that. And this is also a picture of where the sheds are, taken from the next-door neighbors as well. I only have one copy of that, so I can pass it around.
That's fine. Everything should be directed to us as well, anyway.
Yeah, okay. All right, sorry about that.
That's okay.
But anyway, it doesn't, it doesn't meet the, our code for setback of two hundred and fifty feet. It's very clear that that's what has to be. And also, in agriculture five-two-one, it says, all spreading or disposal of manure and sewage sludge shall be accomplished in conformance with manure utilization guides published by the Maine Department of Agriculture on November one, two thousand and one. I've printed those guidelines out, and I'm gonna give them to you, and I'm gonna give you the entire nutrient book, but the basic guidelines that we want to quote is, the, not the owner's private water supply. If it's an upslope, it can be a hundred feet from it. Downslope, three hundred. If you look at where I was standing, it's always downslope, and it's about twenty-five feet from that guy's water. Then it also talks about property line. The manure can't be within a hundred feet of the property line, or two hundred feet if it's downslope. And as far as residents, it can't be within three hundred feet of a neighbor, upslope and downslope. Those are the guidelines, and that's what our ordinance says. So I'm gonna give you that sort of guidelines. I put it off to that page, you can read it, but the entire guidelines are there.
Okay.
The state. That's clearly in, in violation of our ordinance of five-two-one. We have really problems with, water quality was our first complaint, odor was our second complaint, we have a noise complaint. Those goats are within about thirty feet of the neighbor's window. I don't know, have you been there, that site?
I have not.
If you go to the site, I'd like you to do that, and walk on the next-door neighbor's property, and look where the goat pen is presently, and look where the others are compared to those standards, and he's trying to sleep in the summer with his windows. He has to close them. We've really been subjected to smoke, which we talked about, other things. It's just unlivable to be there with this situation going on all the time. I mean, like, the manure at the top of the street, now, that's, that's ridiculous. You know, we've got rats now, we've got health issues with, my wife has allergies, and when he, it's just awful. And so that's our, that's my, my take on, on these. Five point one-one clearly says, and thank God our ordinance are very difficult for people, our zoning are very strong, stronger than the state ones, it clearly says, you cannot put a structure between your residence and the lake if you're in the shoreline zone. It's, right blatantly says that. Please read it, and that's all I have.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Ken, response?
Well, I respect Mr. Gannon for being extremely knowledgeable, but if you've ever looked at an ordinance, there's nothing that's clean and easy to read. To pick it apart, five-two talks agricultural. That's the heading is agriculture, and that's where the no tilling within a hundred feet and, and the storage. Look up the definition of agricultural. It's the production and keeping and maintenance for sale or lease. Instantly, right there. And again, I treat this as if I've got to deal with a judge on this. I'll try to get as much as I can with my smoke and mirrors, but this has been brought into this forum, so I don't have that leverage anymore. Luckily, he's telling me he's coming into compliance with those issues there. So the heading instantly is, is driving me towards commercial. The accessory structure he's talking about, again, that's if you have no place to put the shed whatsoever. And we put that in there from the DEP guidelines, like I said, four or five years ago, for when people can't find a room to put the shed, and they can't meet the hundred-foot setback, we'll allow you, say your camp's forty feet from the water, you can be fifty from the road, ten from the side, we'll, we'll find you a spot to put your shed, so you can at least have a place to put gasoline and stuff like that. That's the intention of five-one-one. I know it's really easy to start grabbing different pieces and not read the whole paragraph and understand the whole thing, but I've had the ordinance shoved down my throat so many times. I, I think it's, I've got a good concept of it and how it would play out in court. And again, we, we just try to get compliance out of people, and that's our last resort we want.
Jack Kelly, I'm here for Mussum Lake Region Association. I got a question for the selectman and the code enforcement officer. We're gonna be doing professional water testing down there in Hubbard's Cove, and what are you gonna do if I, if we come back with some readings? And I told you before that you'll get the readings that we get. What are you gonna do about it, if you get some high readings?
I guess my response to that is, is going to be that we are hoping to get a cure to this before we get high readings, because I just assume not see the high readings. I'd like to see it not impact the lake at all. So, take one more.
My first question is, Ms. Miller, you mentioned that if there's a dangerous condition and acting, and it's reported to you, you need to act. And last week, well, we were asked to get evidence about the rats. So after the meeting, we trapped a rat. We reported it to Vicky Erickson, the health inspector. She asked us to get video and pictures. We did that, and we sent it to her. She advised me that she has forwarded it to Ken Paul, and I'd like to hear what is going on with that. And I'd also like to get a better understanding of what the product, the livestock are being defined as. I've heard personal use, I've heard pets, but I can't find a definition for personal use, and I can't find anything that indicates that livestock are pets.
Okay, thanks. Ken? I'll back up to the prior question, too, as far as if they do get high readings, what are we going to do?
Try to narrow down where the source is coming from. If we want to start looking at some of the erosion issues, that's gonna give us some of the higher readings, that would be great to, to start narrowing it down. And the lake associations have done a tremendous job with the youth conservation groups, but again, I mean, this site here had a house thirty feet from the water, eight, ten years ago, and he's rebuilt it and revegetated from the house all the way down to the lake. As far as the rats, I'm not a rat expert, but I can tell you, I live in the middle of Thirty Acres. My closest neighbor's three thousand feet away. I had a rat at my house a month ago. He was faster than me, so he got away, but I'm not sure, of course, they're coming into a food source, and if you keep the source contained, then you're gonna eliminate the problem. My rats were under my bird feeder. So that's, that's my issue there. So I can't say that those rats were coming to or from, or anything like that, but...
I think if you ask any hardware store right now, that the volume of rats and rodents have increased...
Yep.
Tremendously.
Tremendously. Between mice, squirrels, chipmunks, and rats.
I hate killing things for any reason. There's no reason for it, but I've got a five-gallon bucket half-filled with water with sunflower seeds in it, with a little ramp that goes up. I got fifteen mice and seven chipmunks in one day.
It's bad this year.
Inside my house. I mean, it is tough to bit.
Yeah, it's epidemic on that.
Yeah, they can't get out.
It's a suicide bucket. It's known as my suicide bucket.
Yeah, there you go.
Hopefully, again, working with Mr. Sweeney, he's willing to come into his compliance of that. I think you're always gonna hear the goats. Again, I've been driving by it for twenty years now. I've never smelt the odors. Nobody's ever called until just recently. Of course, burning the manure probably isn't the best way to deal with it, but I think he can use some best management practices to keep it in a trailer, go to the dump every week, keep it into a containment with some tops and things like that. Usually, when I'm dealing with an issue, somebody calls and starts complaining about a deck, they're not concerned about their neighbor's deck. There's another reason behind it. And when you're in this neighborhood, there could be some, and they've all been there for a long time, there could be some past history we're not familiar with. I'm not sure of it, but I just hope the neighbors can all get together, and if he does what he says he's doing in the timeframe he does, hopefully, that'll take care of it.
I do have a concern with the location of manure in reference to residential wells. What's the setback on that for...
If your well is installed properly, and I don't know if it's a dug well, or a point, or a true drilled well with a sealed casing. If it's a true drilled well with a sealed casing, I wouldn't have a problem going right through a, a leach field with it, if it's installed properly. I know we're having problems with this well out here, again, with the salt getting into it, the contamination, but you need to test your water and monitor it, and get your readings, have it done professionally, so we know what you, and at least have a baseline. If it tests positive today and a few years from now, that could be the issue, and the, the owner could be held liable for it if he's found that it, it's from him, is his, his contamination.
Do you know how big the lot is that he has there?
Five, six thousand square feet, maybe. It's, it's one of the bigger ones in the shoreline zone.
Okay.
So he could be up to seven thousand.
I was just wondering what goats are defined as. Are they domesticated animals now in the state of Maine?
You see them everywhere. There's people that fight, they're, they're...
I know. I just didn't know if it was...
I see them hiking out in the woods with people.
I know.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if it was something that was, you know, like, written down.
Like you said, the, the state looks at agriculture a lot differently than they, even like, than the state of New Hampshire looks at it. So, okay. Just one second before you start. Is there anyone else that would like to come up that hasn't been up? Okay, I'll take one. Chuck, come on up, just before we start repeats. And I'm only gonna allow one repeat, just you, and that's gonna be it, and then we're gonna move on here.
My name is Colton Sweeney. I am the property owner on seven seven three thirteenth street. I know there's a three-minute cutoff. I do...
Not in this case.
Okay.
No.
It will be under five minutes. After attending the meeting on October second and watching the meeting on September eighteenth, I have a few things that I would like to say. First of all, not once has any neighbor come to us with any complaints. It's pretty unfair for our neighbors to get upset with things going on without even letting us know they are having issues.
Oh, you just, yeah, just turn the mic a little. There you go. Thanks.
All of our goats, we have raised as babies in our living room, feeding them bottles eight, ten times a day. My son snuggled them for hours at a time. They are as important members of our family as our dogs are. We have some neighbors who come over and bring food scraps of the chickens, and also visit the goats. We have some neighbors whose grandchildren come over to see the goats and play with them on a regular basis during the summer when they're up. I even gave a milking demonstration to four neighbors just this past summer, and let them I even gave a milking demonstration to four neighbors just this past summer and let them milk themselves. In regards to the complaints of water quality, July of 2016, DEP and Department of Agriculture came to our property and tested the water. In 2016, there was no evidence found that our property was contaminating the lake water. Again, on August 8th of this year, both DEP and Department of Agriculture came to our property. The water was tested again at both the beach and the end of the dock after Spencer White at 78413th Street and his realtor, Elias Thomas, sent in a water sample. I have a copy of the report, you guys have a copy of the report. I've got the results here, I'm not going to read it, it's just a waste of time. I believe everybody's seen the reports.
I can't hear, I'm still, I'm sorry.
No. I'm speaking fairly loud, I'll try to do better. The only thing I will add is, the report also states, "It is important to note that the department does not set standards for total coliform bacteria, only E. coli bacteria in freshwater. Coliforms can be generated from a variety of naturally occurring organic matter, whereas E. coli is considered more indicative of warm-blooded animals, including humans." The report concludes with, and I'm directing, and I am directly quoting this from the report from DEP, Matt, supervisor from the Department of Agriculture, who came from DEP. "And I did not find any problems with the goat and chicken pen at 77313th Street that would lead to the conclusion Hubbard Cove was being contaminated by runoff from the pens. The yard, the yard showed no signs of contaminated runoff." "This is two separate times DEP has taken water samples and checked the property without any issues found either time. Therefore, this concern that our property and animals are contaminating the lake water should be null and void and we should stop being harassed. In regards to the complaints about the burning, it has been stated in the previous meetings that there is no state violation in burning manure. But to clarify, what we were burning was excess hay that the goats did not eat. In betting that we would rake up, that we would break up to keep it from building up in the pens. Again, nobody met, ever made any complaints, sorry. Again, nobody ever made any complaints to us that they were having issues with this. On September 4th, we came home to a courtesy card on the door from Ranger Gregory Malogi with the Maine Forest Rangers requesting we give him a call. I called him back an hour later. We called him back that evening and he made us aware of the complaints of the burning and stated it was hindering the neighbors' enjoyment of the property. We immediately stopped burning hay waste. We did not burn again until Friday the 28th, when we were burning debris from the two sheds and one small chicken coop that we had taken down, which we had a burning permit for, which I posted in two separate areas on the property because I knew people would complain. And code enforcement was even aware that these sheds were being demolished. We can understand not wanting constant burning from our cleanups and ceased doing so as soon as we were made aware that there was a complaint. But to say that all burning on our property should not be permitted for reasons such as it affects someone's allergies also means all burning by any neighbor would do the same, i.e. campfires all summer long. And if you're going to complain about this, I will call the forest ranger every time there's a campfire all summer long. In regards to statements by neighbors at 791, the neighbors at 79113th Street, which is right next door, stated during the last meeting that they brought the property in 2016, we had one or two goats and since have added to that and added chickens. In 2016, when they brought the property, we had nine goats and 15 chickens. Currently, we are down to 16, I'm sorry, currently we are down to six chickens. The goats have always served a purpose, providing milk for our family, and the chickens have been a source of eggs for our family as our, for our family as well. Our animals are our pets and a source of education, entertainment for our son. None of this has changed since they brought the property. In regards to the statements by neighbor at 784, the neighbor at 78413th Street, Spencer White, referred to me as a bully at the last meeting. The irony in the statement is that I have never had any contact with almost any of the people making these complaints beyond waving as we pass each other on the road. Before an altercation with Spencer on the 23rd, he and I have not talked since 2014, when he initially listed his camp for sale and we spoke to him about purchasing a portion of his non-buildable lot for him. On September 19th, Spencer had his land surveyed, which did not match the survey we had done in 2013, which I have copies of. He had wooden stakes placed in our yard. We removed the wooden stakes in our yard and started make arrangement, arrangements to have corner posts come back to repose the property line as their survey had found it to be in 2013 and contacted real estate attorney, attorney to deal with the property line issue. On September 23rd, Spencer, upset over the stakes being taken down, not only removed posted signs we had posted on trees at the end of our driveway, but he stopped in front of my house three times in 10 minutes, stopped his car and yelled at me out the window that I had to put the state stakes back or he was going to sue me. At 16:54 hours, I contacted Sanford Dispatch before Spencer ever called Sanford Dispatch and filed the complaint that he took down the signs. I also have a copy of this call log, in case anybody is curious to see that I called first. And because of where I work, I said, "Maybe you should call the state police so there can be no, oh, he's friends with this person, he's friends with that person." And all that can be, can be, I don't have the actual call log stating that I said that, but it's on record, it's on tape. But I do have the call log that shows me calling first. Deputy Frazier responded and Spencer was told it was a civil, civil issue and had to handle it in court, which should have been how we handled the property line dispute, dispute from the beginning. Not yelling at me, stopping in front of my house. You know, I have a five-year-old. My five-year-old does not need to hear some adult yelling out of his window that he's going to sue me and he's, for me to put the stakes back. He was very aggressive and I don't need to deal with that. The bottom line here is that we feel completely harassed. We understand that neighbors don't like us having goats. We are sorry they don't like it. We have tried to be respectful neighbors by not keeping roosters, hauling all of our manure away rather than composting it and cleaning out our goat buildings weekly to help with the smell issues. We stopped burning the wasted hay the day we were told that there was a complaint about it and immediately went to code enforcement before I received a certified letter from code enforcement. I went to code enforcement. If our neighbors had issues, especially things that can be easily addressed, they could have at any time said something before wasting many hours and tax dollars on state and town resources. The situation at this point has become out of control and is honestly beyond repair. I've heard it said multiple times during the last two meetings, how this road is like a family and how close everyone is, yet not one single person ever thought to come to us and address any kind of issue. Our neighbors on this road are not concerned with the numerous other code violations on properties, including properties owned by the people here at this meeting, but are using alleged code violations as a way to bully us out of the neighborhood and our property that has been owned by the Sweeney family for three generations. At this point, we are concerned for the safety of our family and our pets. I dread going out every morning expecting to find poisoned dead goats because that's what I think these neighbors are capable of. This group of malicious people have made us nervous about having our family and particularly our son even at home. We have people on our property without permission filming us and instigating issues. Spencer admitted at the last meeting to, to be waiting for me to return on the 23rd. We have one of the neighbors from 79113th Street on Friday, September 28th, walking around our goat pen, which has been posted a week or two ago.
I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt you right there. I don't want to get into any more of that. You've stated your case on that. I, I don't want to get into any of that because it's going to end up in a bad situation.
Okay.
I got one question for you.
Well, can I?
And that's just simply quick, it's, my one question for you is how many goats do you have? That's one thing I haven't heard.
16.
16 right now, okay, thanks.
And six of them are babies that should be leaving this week.
Go.
You said leaving?
Leaving.
Yeah, so you got 10 big ones.
Leaving, okay. Okay. Like I said, I don't want to get into any more debate about neighbors and whatnot. You've stated your case on that and we appreciate that. Do you have anything else to add that might?
I do.
Okay.
The Maine Farm Bureau has also contacted us. We did not contact them. And they are very willing to help us resolve this unfortunate issue at hand. And they have lots of resources and, uh, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't think I'm going to take any more questions on this. Uh, we've been rounding, we've, we've covered a lot of territory, heard a lot of things. I don't know if Ken has anything else to add or anything else he wants to look into on this. I'm sure he probably will be looking into some other things on it. But I think at this point, I think we're all set.
Yeah, it sounds like he's complying with what code enforcement is, is requesting and.
Yeah.
Are we not having any more public comments today?
Not.
Not right now.
You can bring him up under the public comment section, which would be a three-minute limitation on it. So. I mean, I think we've heard, we've heard an awful lot on this from both sides tonight. And I think it's, it's all good. I think, I want to go down and see the site personally, and I think the other two probably do. I mean, we're not judge and jury on this. And I, I, it sounds like he's working hard to correct some issues that he had and working with the, what was it, the State Agriculture?
Farm, Maine Farm Bureau.
Maine Farm Bureau, uh, which I think is hopefully going to be, that, that sounds like a good source as well. So. Ken, I'll give you one last thing, anything else you want to add?
If you're going out there, wait until the date is in compliance.
Okay.
Okay.
The third, I think is the date of the required.
Okay.
All right.
Where you can see.
Okay. Okay. Yep, yep. I can definitely see on the burning side. You're burning the hay. The hay has urine in it, it does have feces in it. It's going to, it's going to have an odor. So. He said he's not doing that anymore. So, but Ken's going to be on it, he's going to be keeping a close eye. He's got until the date in November to, to meet the compliance, so.
I just want to add that I, I think that all of you guys are nice people and, you know, on both sides and I, I feel like we should try to, try a little better to get along and work with each other and, I don't know. I don't, I don't like to see conflict.
No. Yeah, this, this is where it is, so. Thank you. Okay. Item A, generator bid.
So quite a few of these, um, we're going to table until next week, if you're approval.
Okay.
Yeah, so generator bids is one, nothing new.
Okay. Utility box bids?
We are waiting to award the truck bid.
Okay. Uh, canal bridge?
Uh, canal bridge, just quickly, I am in the process of trying to reach out to the town administrator in Wakefield. As I, I mentioned, I got an interesting call from someone from the state of Maine regarding acting, assisting or being part of these conversations, so I'll have more on that next week.
Okay. Animal control officer position?
I have one person that has reached out saying they're interested, but I haven't got them in the building yet, but I'm working on it.
Okay, it's better than nobody. So. Okay, ewe took care of or, or in the works of, town report?
As soon as the tax deadline comes and goes, I'll have a draft for you.
Okay. Mary Grant Pumpkin Carving?
I saw Mr. Dick Neal walk in and maybe we can borrow him for a minute. Barbara, I know you're watching and I know I cut you off when you called me a few minutes before 5, but it was such short notice. But the good news, I think, on that is that they are, Mr. Neal, planning on having the event, October 20th, as I understand it. Barbara has gotten some calls and some volunteers and I know the few people on the committee are, are working towards it. So October 20th, the pumpkin carving is a go. They're still looking for people and donations, so you can certainly reach out to Mr. Neal after the meeting or if you want Barbara's phone number, give me a call directly and I'll set you up with her, so. It's like a go for October 20th. What time, Mr. Neal? Four to?
I think, uh, 7:04.
Four, yep, four to 7:00. So don't, pumpkins, food, any donations like that would be great.
Okay. Truck bids?
So I met with the fire chief in regards to the different bids that came in and he is comfortable with the low bid and the, which was a Rundle Ford, um, like looking for a motion to approve the bid from a Rundle Ford for $48,637. That was, if you recall, by, I think it was $4,000 to $6,000 difference in the highest, it was up to 10, but he did review it, um, a Rundle to make sure that everything was on there that he was looking for and he was comfortable with that bid.
Okay. Just going down through the, the bid specs that they put in.
Yeah, I had him review it to make sure there was nothing missing.
I was just glancing down through these. That is a really, really good price for what this truck is. It's a 550 Ford. Believe it's crew cab, yes, it is a crew cab, four-wheel drive, diesel. To buy something like that for $48,000 is, is a good price. So. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we signed the bid for $48,637 with a Rundle Ford.
I'll second that.
Who didn't second it, any discussion? Call for, call for vote, all in favor, all opposed? Okay.
So I'll give them a call tomorrow and start getting paperwork going.
Okay, row bridge?
Board instructed me to put this on there in regards to the timeframe and prior discussions. I'm looking for direction, if any.
Like to, do you have anything you want to discuss on it? I'd like to table it and.
I'd like to table it.
Table it?
Okay.
So bring it back next week?
Sure.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
New business propane contract?
So last week you awarded the bid to Down East Energy. I have reviewed everything, the $1.65 for the propane and the number two, everything in the contract is the same. This is a prior company.
Okay.
And the numbers are as, um, they submitted. So I just need a signature on it. You technically awarded it last week.
Yep. So all you need is a signature on it now?
Yep.
Okay. And, I'll tell you what. Go ahead and sign down there, all three might as well sign it. Thanks. Okay. Public comment?
My timing?
Pardon? Yes, please. Yes, please.
Jim Murray, 72313th Street. I heard several things that I just want to, want to comment on. Number one, I heard from Mr. Sweeney that he has never had me come to his house and say hello to him. Mr. Sweeney, you go by my house every day in my garage.
All comments this way, please.
Never, never has he made any gesture of friendship to me. I really take it offensive that I would, insinuation, I might poison a goat, or we might poison a goat. I love animals too, I've had dogs. My third comment is more constructive. If, if the motion is really out there to try to work with our neighbors and somebody's going to have 18 goats, and that's a bunch of goats. I mean, let's face it, or 16, whatever it is. That's a bunch of goats. And what, what anybody wants to say, it stinks. Now, I'm far enough away that I, I don't get it too bad, I'm a hire. But I've been down that hill, it stinks. There's no way around it, it stinks. Now, if Mr., I want, if I'm not supposed to say the name, if the gentleman doesn't want to fix the problem, maybe he could mediate with his neighbors. Maybe we should have a mediator. Uh, I, I can't turn and look at him. I mean, I, I think, get together as neighbors and mediate the problem.
Let me, let me interrupt you for one second. He didn't say he didn't want to fix the problem, he's working to fix the problem. So I think we need to give the gentleman some time to, to try to get that done.
Okay, but the smell is not being addressed and it's really awful.
Go ahead.
Instead of us heading to court, which is where it's going, maybe, maybe we could mediate the problem. And I'm directing that at the end.
That would be nice.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Stephanie, 79113th Street. Couple of questions, is it acceptable to dispose of animal waste at the town dump?
They have a compost pile.
They do have a compost pile.
Okay. So will there be no investigation or action on the rats?
I don't know how you can tell where they're coming from.
Well, we have seen the direction they come from, we have witnesses that have seen them running around the pens.
I'm not sure how an investigation would start on that.
Okay. I do invite you to come to my house before everything is done so that you can understand why we're here and what we're dealing with. Also, um, we still didn't quite get a definition on personal use of the animals and pets. What is the ordinance for livestock versus personal use or pets?
I think Ken said we didn't have one, is that correct?
Yeah, he, there was, yeah, he said that more than once, so there's no.
No, there is an.
No, we don't have one.
They're allowed, they're allowed there. That's personal use.
Ordinance on that, it's.
Okay.
Pets are personal use or farm animals.
All right.
Personal use, use being collecting eggs and milk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So are the pens permitted to be? Okay. So, are the pens permitted to be within seventy-five to eighty feet of the waterfront?
Oh, we can't answer that question earlier tonight. I mean, so...
Okay, I have one last question. If Ken Paul was advised that they were, Ken Paul was advised that they were not selling livestock or livestock products, if evidence was provided showing otherwise, would that change your decision and with regard to allowing this to occur with the...
Well, if there's, if there's proof, then obviously we, we have to deal with it as, as a commercial.
Right, as long as that proof came after the fact of the day that Mr., that the code enforcement spoke to the property owner. Because when he spoke to the property owner, he did see the website. He spoke to him afterwards. Everything was taken down. So, it would have to be proof after those days, after that letter was sent, if he was still continuing to do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, I do invite you over.
I'm gonna, I'm definitely, I, I did drive down through there probably a couple of weeks ago. I couldn't, I didn't have the address with me to find the site. So, but I'm gonna drive back down again.
Donna Davidson, six thirty-seven thirteenth street. It's my understanding from the research that I've done that if the state of Maine has an ordinance that is stricter than the town ordinance, then the state of Maine takes precedence for that ordinance. Is that true?
Sounds correct.
I believe so.
I would think so.
Then the state of Maine considers goats livestock. There, it's very clearly stated that goats and chickens are considered livestock, not pets.
I'd have to see it in writing, but I, not that I don't believe you, but I gotta see everything in writing.
So, I just thought I would clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, good. Arnold Murray. I'd just like to, there's numbers spin around and they just aren't told what it is. They just say manure and there's a bunch of manure. I'd like to say that I did some, how much manure is produced. I checked with the manure management for small hobby farms, the state of Pennsylvania, environmental protection, managing sheeps and goat manure, the federal government natural agricultural library estimating goat and sheep manure production and their nutrient contribution to the Chesapeake Bay watershed. I would just like to give you some figures and you can do with them what they were. This is figures for twelve goats. The average goat generates a half to a gallon of milk a day. If that's, if you figure that out and extrapolate that out, goats are dry a few times, a few, few weeks a year, comes out to approximately nine hundred and seventy-six gallons of milk from twelve goats. Manure, a hundred-pound goat produces four pounds of manure a day. Twelve goats times four pounds manure a day equals seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty pounds annually. The nutritional value or whatever you want to call it, not nutritional value, but out of that, three percent is nitrogen, two percent is phosphorus, and one percent is potassium. So, when it rains, if that's on the ground, whether it's at the dump or not, if, if that's those seventeen thousand pounds of manure are going to the dump, that brush piles on a slope, that's all gonna be washing down somewhere. All I'm saying is, it's, it's there. How do we deal with it?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Shannon Winchell, road commissioner's wife. Just wanted to say that her husband has been elected for three terms. He's served nine years. This is his tenth year and he's had no problems with the taxpayers, no problems for the last nine. With the new board, it seems like he was given twelve days to do what you asked him to do on the road bridge, which I don't think is fair. That's not enough time. You follow what the road committee wants and then you set a guideline and say, okay, that's what you need to do. And then I also, you know, I, I've watched my husband over the years and I find out that supposedly somebody decided to say that you didn't like the way that my husband talked to you, the boy. Nobody sees how you guys talk to my husband. And then somebody decides that my husband is a sexist? I think not. He works with many people, many contractors, many women and has no issue. But if you want respect from him, you've got to give him the respect back. You're doing a disservice to the taxpayers because it's almost winter time. He's gotta get his plow trucks ready. He's gotta get everything ready to go. And now you want to worry about the road bridge and having the guardrails and having everything done and then also have flat ground road, which he has been working on like you asked. So, now the question is, he's trying to get everything done and you just keep adding more and more and more. And I'm just wondering where you guys fare on that. I didn't know that it was your job to tell a road commissioner what to do. Last I knew, they were elected by the town.
Shannon, as far as flat ground road goes, I asked him a question and he blew up at me and told me where I could go and what to do.
Yep, and how many times have you insulted him, Louise?
I asked one question. Do you know, I have not insulted him.
Oh, yes, you have. I've been there when you have.
Look, I'm not gonna go back and forth about this, but he speaks down at me with his fingers.
No.
Yes, I have asked him to stop pointing kindly. It's what he does.
And you know what? The town has elected him for nine years and he has had no problem with the taxpayers or anybody else.
Alls I can say is, there were taxpayers who asked us about flat ground. There were taxpayers who asked us about road bridge. We go to ask and he has a hissy fit.
No, he doesn't have a hissy fit.
Yes, he did.
That's your opinion?
Well, when somebody screams at me and tells me to shove it up my you-know-what, that's rude. I mean, when we just asked a question.
It's all right, because you guys are doing a disservice.
He's very disrespectful to us.
You're saying that he's disrespectful to you. You guys have been disrespectful to him. So, it goes both ways. You can sit here and say it's one way.
He's, he's been asked more than once for the road bridge. The road bridge has been asked and it's, it's been recorded. We've asked him probably five times.
And that's fine.
And he said he would do it.
Yep, then you gave him twelve days. Twelve days.
Well, asked her five times.
I'm sorry, but he's had four years to work on that guardrail, according to the state reports and it hasn't been done. Yes. And so, he said back in April, he would do it. And so, here we are in September, a month away from getting ready to plow. We're asking him to put it on his agenda.
It was on his agenda, but now you guys give him certain time to do it.
But apparently, we're not allowed to ask when.
You sent a email saying you're gonna hire somebody else.
We should be able to talk with him. We should be able to ask a question without being screamed at and hollered and cornered.
Oh, it's easy to have a conversation with him.
All right. Three minutes has gone by.
Absolutely not.
Time up.
You guys, I'm just saying, you guys are the ones doing this disservice and you will see that.
Yep.
Time's up. Thank you.
Cindy Hart, road committee. Two years ago, we started, brought up the bridges again. At that point, the road commissioner insisted that these were not his responsibility. He had talked to the man under the bridge and it wasn't his. That's fine with us because the road committee had handled the bridges. However, I do think that we've got to take the drama out of all of this, realize that Acton has three failing bridges with no plans, no financial plans, nothing. And Jennifer, if you're going over to Wakefield, I'll go over with you. I, I think that'd be a good experience. You've got to look at what they're doing with their financing and with getting grants. And perhaps she can teach us how to get the same grants that they're going for. They're able to get FEMA grant money for several and they're, in our case, we're probably able to get grant money for West Shore, West Shore Drive from stream crossing. The road committee will meet next week and we'll get into this, but I'm a little sick of all this drama. There were plenty of time. That letter, this year's letter came in in April. That bridge should have, that bridge should have been cleaned up. There's no use, excuse for that. Every, the road commissioner was too busy all summer to get this done and too busy for the last couple of years. Someone else would have come in. We had volunteers.
Okay, let's, let's not get into that now. Okay?
Volunteers would have done it and I will stop.
We, okay. Yeah, I think we've heard plenty of this.
But let's, let's pay attention to the taxpayers too. This is millions of dollars we're talking.
I'm gonna, you're gonna want to hear this. Okay? I'm gonna need more in three minutes. And, because this will be the last time I, I do this. Okay? First of all, I never said I was, the bridges are the road committees. Okay? I, I don't want anybody else doing my job except for myself. I've done, this is my ten years now. I think I've done my job. I come to these meetings. Yes, I've been agitated for the last two months. The road committee, they continue to press their agenda, which is fine. But over time here, when the election came up, I wasn't gonna run again. Okay? People convinced me to do so, I did. I made a mistake. And so, but after the last couple of weeks, listening to the road committee make recommendations that I have to come to them to do projects. I've seen the writing on the wall when it comes to the, where my, I've gotten a letter from you guys stating that you can tell me what to do, when to do it, how much to spend, who to hire, who to fire. I don't feel that my job is the same job I ran for ten years ago. So, tonight, I blew up. Been poking the bear. Keep poking it. And tonight, I got called a sexist. So, I'm making an official tonight of October ninth that I am resigning my position as road commissioner. I am not walking into this town hall and having to worry about accusations like that because that could ruin someone's life. I just gave up a, a really good opportunity so I can fulfill my job and I did. And that opportunity has gone by, so I screwed myself because I figured that I had to do what I had to do because town Acton voted me in. I wasn't having a temper tantrum. I'm just tired of being poked at. I see things happening in this town hall with people working within the, as town employees that I, I believe it's not a good, it's not a good route we're rolling here. I don't believe I've, I've had any say in the last three months. I've tried to accommodate. Certain people here seem to have more say than I do. I'm not gonna be told again that I'm not doing my job. I guess I haven't. I'm not coming up here and winding myself up every Tuesday because I'm the only guy, only road commissioner shows up for this, this crap. Okay? I'm the only one showing up for this. I'm not showing up no more. You've got my notice of October ninth. I need to be able to get all the town stuff down to the town shed.
October ninth or November ninth?
What?
October ninth or November, October ninth is yesterday.
So, that means...
Today is that so nice?
Today.
Not nice today? Oh, next, next Friday.
Okay.
Because I, I need a week. I am sorry to the taxpayers that voted for me, that wanted me to do this, you know, continue doing what I'm doing. But at this point in time, I see the writing on the wall and I'm not gonna get accused of stuff. It's too easy to throw that stuff out there and I'm not gonna have my, my face pictured all over newspaper because someone blurted shit out. So, I'm sorry to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm disappointed greatly that you're doing that because I, I am. I am, David. It doesn't, you know, but I understand why. So, okay.
Greg Vermette. That's something I didn't want to hear. Like I said, when we were working second shift, my wife and I traveling from Portsmouth back here. The roads that Mr. Winchell was in charge of were the best roads from Portsmouth, Dover, Somersworth, Milton Mills. His roads were the best. We never had any problems. And it drifts up my way a lot and he had told me, if it's ever drifting, let me know. Give me a call. And I'm really sorry this had to happen because, as I have said before, it seems though he is always getting picked on and it's not right. He's got a job to do and I'm gonna miss him.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bill Gannon, thirteenth street. I would just ask that you potentially talk to the people from the planning board that made the zoning ordinances. These ordinance were made extremely strictly to protect the shorelands. There are specific things in here about manure and, and setbacks, et cetera, that were done by these people and we should enforce the spirit of what we put in and why we put it in the zoning ordinance. If we have done that, we wouldn't be in this situation right now. Thanks a lot for listening.
Thank you.
Spencer White, I'll make this brief. I'm, I'm basically saying I'm done with fighting this issue. It's taking too much of my time. A couple of comments. I think the person at seven seventy-three has a lapse in memory. I just wanted to, I didn't stop in front of his property three times. I stopped once. The second time, when I caught him pulling the stakes out of the property. It's a separate issue. It's gonna be addressed separately. But I would ask you, please, on behalf of the entire neighborhood, to pay a visit, maybe unannounced, maybe as soon as possible, and you see if you would like to come out there and sit in an area of nice homes. We all work hard to keep our homes up nice. You see if you'd like to sit there and invite relatives and friends up to be driven off by the stench of manure and urine. That's all I'm asking. Please uphold it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What else? Nope. Okay. Announcements? Basketball, October thirteenth, sign up deadline. Taxes to do, October sixteenth. There's a rabies clinic in Lebanon. Where is that being held in Lebanon? Do we know?
Fire station.
Fire station. That is on the twenty-first of October. Fifteen dollars per shot, November first.
Third. Three.
Oh, November third. Okay, typo. November third, Library Chili and Chowder Cookoff. November sixth, Election Day, no selectmen's meeting that night. And as usual, oh, and we have the pumpkin carving, October twentieth at Mary Grant from four to seven. So, and as usual, all the meetings are on the website. Do you have anything else?
No.
Anything else? Anything else, Jennifer?
No, sir.
Nope. Call for...
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Move to second and to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.